8th, 2021 Planning Commission Committee of the Whole. The committee allows for more detailed conversation and exploration of issues. I would like to ask for your patience as we continue to conduct virtual meetings, and there may be slight delays as we transition between speakers, presentations, and participants. If any participants have issues with technology, please send a message to the moderator. Before we get started, I wanted to make a revision to the agenda so that we can hear the Comprehensive Plan Amendment CP 320 first. There are three discussion items on the agenda today, and there are some members of the public joining us today. We typically do not have time limits for speakers at the Committee of the Whole, and I would ask everyone to be respectful of our time. And if you would like to speak, please send a message to the moderator. I would ask that comments not be duplicative and for commissioners to hold all questions until the conclusion of all presentations and any public comments, and to be recognized by the speaker. So with that, do we need to take any sort of vote to change the structure of the agenda? No. Okay. So then we'll go ahead and move on to discussion item number one, which will be Comprehensive Plan Amendment CP 320: Equitable Development Around Transit. This Comprehensive Plan Amendment is city-initiated and has been discussed at the November 5th and the November 19 Committee of the Whole meetings. And Matthew Clem will present on behalf of city staff, I believe.
I am unmuting that as we speak. I apologize. The delay is coming through my end.
No problem.
Hey, thanks, Chair Hicks, and thanks, Sarah, for unmuting me. Can you all hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, great, thanks. Yeah, so thanks for that background. This has been before you a number of times, so I won't go through the slides additionally. But just to remind you, this planning process was wrapping up right around spring of last year when things started to shut down. And so we've got a suite of Comprehensive Plan Amendments that reflect input received from the community for the equitable development around transit planning process that we had. And the idea of these amendments is to encourage an equitable land use pattern in the areas that are planned for bus rapid transit implementation. And so we're looking at land use in station areas for those four corridors. So it's kind of a framework for all four corridors. And it was the first step in our, what will likely be the next decade of work or so in station area planning. We are kicking off New Bern Station Area Planning in the coming weeks, and the policies and the framework in the equitable development around transit plan will be the framework for that forthcoming work. We hadn't received any additional questions from the Planning Commission. I had sent all of the materials and some presentation materials in the video before and hadn't received any questions, so I can take questions now if you would like to discuss any further. But what we are looking for today is for reporting out to the Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission will receive the committee's report on February 9th. And then the deadline to get a recommendation to the City Council is their meeting on the 16th, which will be your following meeting. So to stick to that timeline, you'll need to make a recommendation to the Planning Commission today, and then on February 9th, the Planning Commission will need to make a recommendation to the City Council.
Great, thank you for that. So I would like to now allow for question or comments from commissioners. Commissioner Fox.
In rereading the material to prepare for this meeting, going through the whole guidebook, I noted that there was not a significant amount of language about grid density around stations or the provision of one-way streets, which has been tied to equity. I mean, a really good example of that is in, you see that in Baltimore. It was in a journal article about two years ago. I'm wondering, Matt, maybe if that is dealt with elsewhere in the Comprehensive Plan, so that's not an issue to insert in the equitable development around transit, or if it's not contemplated as being a measure of equity?
Yeah, thanks for that, Commissioner Fox. No, there is not any specific recommendations for one-directional streets or any reference specifically to grid density, as you stated. What we have included in the equitable development around transit policies are two critical maps that would recommend various levels of density in different station areas and changes to the urban-built form. And so the urban form map is part of the recommended amendments, and it creates nodes of urban form frontage designations around the station areas, about a quarter mile, which would recommend shopfront, urban general, or urban limited frontage designations. And then each of the station areas in the entire network has been assigned a transit station area type. There are five types. There's downtown, emerging urban center, neighborhood center, campus, and park. Each of those designations has a recommended level of density and recommended building height in those areas. So less specifically about, I guess, grid density, like you mentioned, but there are policies in the plan in the form of map policies that would recommend walkable urban form with varying levels of density around the station area.
Commissioner Fox.
A brief follow-up, if that's okay. So for instance, Matt, we had a case, I want to say it was off of Corporate Center Boulevard, where the applicant conditioned in that they would not meet block perimeter, if I'm not mistaken. Would that still be allowed in a station area to use that as a prospective condition?
Yeah, there's, so what Commissioner Fox is referencing is typically, in almost all cases, the Unified Development Ordinance does not allow a zoning condition to allow a development to be less restrictive. The one exception is for block perimeter. That requirement can be conditioned out of the regulation essentially with a zoning condition. This plan does not directly change that part of the regulation. A kind of a parallel track of work that this has influenced this planning is an amendment to the TOD, Transit Oriented Development Overlay District. And so that's something that you may see there. It's not included in this plan, but we will be looking at changing the regulations. So that potentially is something you could see in that, but not expressly addressed in this suite of Comprehensive Plan Amendments. That would need to be something that would be changed in the Unified Development Ordinance of the zoning regulation itself.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Miller.
We're just moving this to the full committee. Are we supposed to include, okay, or the full commission, excuse me?
We are sending this to the full commission, but your motion should cite Comprehensive Plan consistency and include a statement of why the request is reasonable and in the public interest.
Okay. Might just take a moment.
Sure.
To pull up all of those. My staff report doesn't look like the others. I make a motion to move this to the full Planning Commission with a recommendation that it be approved by the Planning Commission as it is reasonable and in the public interest and consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, in particular, the identified plan policies related to coordinating land use and transportation, managing our growth, and other plan policies set forth in the staff report.
Great, thank you. So we have a motion to approve and move to full Planning Commission and Commissioner Fox. We have a second from Commissioner Fox.
Second.
Thank you. And with that, I will ask Shanitha for a roll call.
Commissioner Bennett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fox?
Aye.
Chair Hicks?
Aye.
Commissioner Lantman?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann?
Aye.
Commissioner McIntosh?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Haver?
Aye.
And Commissioner Winters?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, and it passes. So moving on to item two is rezoning case Z 4920, Tryon Road, and this will be our first time hearing this case. And John Anagast will present on behalf of city staff.
Thank you, Chair Hicks. This is the zoning case Z-49-20 at 3624 Tryon Road. It's a single parcel that's over six acres, and it is a rezoning from residential 10 conditional use with special residential parking overlay district and special highway overlay district one, and the conservation management district conditional use with those same overlays to industrial mixed-use three, the parking limited frontage and conditions, and retaining the conservation management district in the rear of the site. So there's a lot of overlays in that title there, but I think it's important that the main zoning that's changing here is the residential 10 to the industrial mixed-use three with parking limited frontage. So that's what the policy analysis is focused on, and your deadline for a recommendation is March the 8th. And so this area is on the north side of Tryon Road. Gorman Street is to the west, and interchange of Gorman and I-40 is to the northwest of the site, and then Trail Wood Road, Trail Wood is to the east. And on the south side of Tryon in this area is the Swift Creek Watershed, and so that's why you see that pretty abrupt change to a lower density zoning, and that's also reflected in the future land use map. But the zoning on the north side of Tryon Road in this area is a little bit of a mix. To the west, near the Gorman Street intersection, is more of a mixed-use character, and then to the east is more residential with a range of residential densities. Here you can see an aerial image of the site, so it's currently covered mostly by a dirt driving surface that's been used by a tree service in the past, and then there is tree cover in the rear of the site where that conservation management zoning applies. And then in the nearby area, you can see self-service storage to the west, church to the southwest, and then two multifamily developments to the east, with the apartment development to the northeast is University Woods, and then directly to the east is Tryon Place Townhome. Here you can see a little closer from the aerial, you can see the proximity of the site with those residential uses to the east. There has been some conversation during the neighborhood meetings for this case about when exactly this tree service started operating here. It is important to note that the tree service was operating illegally for the entire time that it was operating. It never had zoning approval. And so there, but there was conversation during the neighborhood meeting that potentially it preexisted the residential development, and that's not really relevant to the policy analysis here, but I think it's helpful to avoid digressing on that conversation too much during the conversation today. So I did include some aerial photos over time to show the progression of land uses in this area. So this image is from 2004, and you can see the previous use on the property, which was a junkyard, and at that time, the University Woods apartments clearly are fully developed and occupied while the previous use was operating. Then a few years later in 2008, you can see the junkyard had ceased operations and those cars have been removed from the site. There does appear to be some equipment on the site. It's not clear whether that's associated with the tree service, and you can see University Woods apartments are there, but there are, it doesn't appear to be any development of Tryon Place Townhome. And then the following year in 2009, there is what appears to be tree service equipment on the zoning site, and then the site preparation for Tryon Place is underway, and there are, in the bottom there, you can see four townhouses constructed. But that's a little bit of the timeline here. Here you can see the street view of the site at Tryon Road and the rear setbacks of those townhouses. This is looking directly into the site, and so you can see that dirt driving surface and then the remainder of the industrial building that was there, and then a little bit farther west on Tryon. So there are conditions offered with this case. The first condition is not necessary, and transportation staff have noted that this could be removed, and really that issue should be left to the site plan process, but the first condition limits access to the site to one access point on Tryon Road. And then there are a series of conditions that are replicating the existing conditions on the conservation management area in the rear, so basically retaining the aspects of that that prevented development on that area of the site, and then some conditions that are specific to the proposed use, which the applicant has stated is to reinstate the tree service use that was operating before and has ceased operation at this time. And so there is a set of allowed uses, which are roughly equivalent to a CX district plus tree service, and then limitations on overall development to either a residential development of 10 units per acre or a commercial development, 54,000 square, up to 54,000 square feet, which could be a mix of office, retail, and tree service. There is a required landscape yard on the east side of the site, offered in the conditions, prohibition on drive-throughs, limitation on hours of operation, building height is limited below the 50-foot maximum in the three-story designation that's requested. And then the final condition is to prohibit wood processing activity as part of a principal use. Now, it still does allow if there was some kind of tree clearing took place, regular maintenance of landscaping that's allowed, but one of the concerns that's been raised by neighboring residents is that the site would continue to be used for the chipping or mulching or cutting of wood on the site, so that is prohibited. And so tree service activity would be limited to the movement of the wood products with trucks and other equipment. Here you can see the entitlement between the proposed, or existing and the proposed. So existing, of course, is residential, being residential 10 district, and the same density is allowed in existing and proposed, roughly 60 units. And then you can see the non-residential entitlement set by the zoning conditions with a combined total of 54,000 square feet between the uses you see there. The future land use map here is community mixed-use, so that does not point to the light industrial type zoning that would allow a tree service or contractor yard type use that's being requested, and so it is inconsistent with that portion of the future land use map. The private open space designation that's in the rear, the maintenance of the conservation management zoning in the back of the site, and the retention of the special highway overlay district, which will require tree conservation or planting in that area, is consistent with private open space for that portion of the site. But overall, the request is inconsistent with the future land use map due to the light industrial uses that would be allowed. The urban form map here has a number of designations, and I think this tells a little bit of a story about how the city is envisioning the future of the Gorman Street and Tryon Road intersection. As you saw in images today, it is a bit of a mixed character, but these urban form designations are pointing towards a different character in the future, which would be a more walkable transit-oriented district focused on that intersection with a mix of uses that support people spending time outside of their vehicles. And so the type of use that would be allowed by the proposed zoning does not support that, but the zoning does offer a parking limited frontage, which is supported by the urban form map, and so they are consistent generally with the urban form guidance. So here you can see the comprehensive plan analysis overall is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan due to the potential impacts of a light industrial use such as tree service or contractor yard that might have on residential development nearby in the form of noise, dust, light, vibration, things of that nature that may come from large trucks and equipment moving through a site, and then also the little bit of policy inconsistency related to deviation from that envisioned future urban form for the area. And here you can see the future land use map amendment that would be caused if this was approved to business and commercial services to reflect the light industrial use that's proposed. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
So now I'd like to allow for, hold on. I'm sorry, I lost my way here. Now I'd like to allow for the applicant to present.
Good afternoon. This is Isabel Maddox. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Good afternoon.
Isabel Maddox, P.O. Box 94627602. I'm here today with my client, Kenny Ellis, who is on the line. He is with A+ Tree Service, prospective developer. Also on the line is Daniel Watley, landscape architect, and David Brown, also landscape architect, both of Withers and Ravenel, and Matt James, who's a professional geologist with Withers and Ravenel, who is our environmental consultant. And I want to speak, and then I'm going to turn it over to each of those folks to do a little piece on their particular segment, so we're going to try to hand that off in an efficient way, but please bear with us. So just here today to discuss what is a difficult side and provide you a little background on this case. John gave you the general story, but there's a little bit more to it. This applicant, Kenny Ellis, A+ Tree Service, is a small, homegrown, minority-owned business who started his business sort of at the time of Hurricane Fran, if y'all remember that, in 1997, 98, when he was a student at NC State. In his work, he passed this site multiple times and saw it had the remnants of a junkyard, clearly an industrial site. He liked the location, and it was vacant, and so he thought, man, I could use this site for my business. So he went to the owner, and she agreed to lease it to him for his tree business. So he did. He leased it for a number of years with the unfortunately incorrect understanding that it was properly zoned for unrestricted industrial use. After all, it, most recent use had been a junkyard, and so that was a reasonable expectation on his part. But then in earlier this year, or earlier in 2020, they were cited with notice of violation by the city because the property is actually zoned residential. And once he learned that, he moved his business to a less convenient but temporary location, and he started this zoning process, hoping to come back to the site. Now, the neighbors have experienced this business being located next door and have expressed opposition to the business, but it's important to understand, he was operating with a different mindset about the property. He felt that it was just full industrial property. Now he realizes that he's going to have to tighten things up. We have offered a number of very restrictive conditions, and we think that will change his use of the site. And probably the most objectionable time for the neighbors was earlier this year when he was having to relocate, and that was kind of noisy and very dusty because it's not, the site's not paved at this point. And so I think that was the most objectionable time for the tenants, the residents next door. You know, this business will be mostly the guys, the workers showing up in the morning, getting their trucks, their, you know, tree-cutting trucks, and going on to the sites to work. All the work's done on other sites, so they get called for a tree job, they do it on the site where the trees are located, and they come back to the site at night. They may have some trucks on their truck, on their vehicles, and then they get in their personal vehicles and go home. And, you know, once this site plan is implemented, the drives and the parking will all be paved, so the dust will go away. We also restrict the hours of operation, and we've provided for a wide and opaque buffer and a fence along the residential property to buffer it both visually, it'll have some noise benefits, and it will protect children, et cetera, from coming over into the site. You know, as you can see from Exhibit 1, if you'll move to Exhibit 1, the site is very long and very narrow. It's very difficult to develop. The current owner has owned this property for over 20 years and has, despite its good location, she's had many different contracts to sell this property and development proposals, but it remains unsold, undeveloped, and it's basically a blight on the community. It's environmentally contaminated from its use as a junkyard. The site staff report discusses the need for residential development here, but there are two critical limitations that make residential development in this location virtually impossible. First is it's contaminated from its longtime use as a junkyard. It's on the North Carolina DQ list of contaminated sites. It needs to be cleaned up. Secondly, it's nearly impossible to serve the rear two-thirds of this property by sewer. The property, you know, slopes upwards from Tryon to where that little pinch point is that you can see in the middle of the site, the narrowest part of the site, and then it goes, slips back downward towards I-40, meaning that back, back area is very difficult to provide sewer to. So that really means a residential development here, or even a major mixed-use development are virtually impossible. So I'd like to call Daniel Watley, landscape architect from Withers, to go through and explain to you the proposed site plan, and that's, if you'll pull up Exhibit 3, and I'll hand off to Daniel.
Daniel has been unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay.
You're kind of faint.
Okay, I'll try to speak up.
Thank you.
So thanks for having us today. The current site plan that we've presented for this meeting shows a few elements, and so what I'll do is I'll start from the front of the site on Tryon and just work back. And so what you see at the front of the site is a new single driveway entrance off of Tryon Road, and this location of this driveway is positioned to minimize conflict as it relates to other driveways on Tryon. So it's been reviewed by transportation engineers with the city in the form of a sketch plan review, and it's the preferable location for that driveway. Immediately off the driveway and on Tryon are a couple smaller buildings. The intent for these would be to be a small office or retail use. The parking lot between those buildings is about as much parking as we would be able to fit in there, and so the size of the buildings would be limited to the available parking. Our client's thought process on the front building is that it could be a small garden shop or center where you could come and buy fresh produce, annual flowers, seasonal things. He does create a lot of mulch for his business in other locations, but it would serve as a retail front to sell that mulch to people, so it would be a mixed use of retail. I think the idea is that it would be kind of a small neighborhood store, and then behind that would be a general office space. So as you move into the site further, at the back, past the pinch point that Isabel mentioned, that's where we pretty much enter no man's land with the sewer connections. And so what's proposed in the back is a larger garage building for parking of cranes and tree service vehicles. And so it's intended to be just an enclosed space for those vehicles to be parked and out of the elements, out of the weather. The area around that building would all be paved with asphalt. This is a request from fire department for just access for them to get around that entire building with their trucks. It's also designed to minimize dust from large vehicles driving on what's currently dirt. When asphalt and landscape are put in, all, all of that dust would go away. So that, that's the intent there. And then further back behind that is some more paved area just to make the turns with the larger trucks. And then natural landscape tree conservation area along the I-40 frontage, which is known as a shod yard. And then I think most importantly, as it pertains to the neighboring residential site, there's a 40-foot buffer proposed. This would be essentially the, the most dense buffer option provided by the UDO. It would include a wooden opaque fence as well as evergreen plant material. And so when you look at a 40-foot opaque buffer, that acts as a 100% visual screen, a sound barrier, and a, a dust barrier. So that, that's a generous buffer that we're proposing in hopes that it, it will help those neighboring properties feel sheltered and not, not really aware of the site next door anymore. So that's, that's a quick overview, and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I would like to allow for public comment. And I believe there are a number of members of the public in the meeting today who want to provide comments. And I'd ask the moderator to introduce the speaker one at a time, and again, ask the speakers to be respectful of our time and not be duplicative. Can the moderator introduce the first speaker?
Yes, the first speaker is Tricia Posey, and I'm going to hit unmute.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon. I actually turned in a presentation. Does anyone have that? John has that. Great. Thank you, John. Well, good afternoon, planning commissioners. I am Tricia Posey. I am the president of Tryon Place Townhome Association. Next slide, please. We have 71 property owners, 16 of which directly adjoin this property, 3624 Tryon Road. The use of heavy commercial and light industrial I mean, basically truck use, mixed use is what they're proposing. We'll bring about noise, light, dust, and fumes that are detrimental to the quality of, quality of life for our residents and other neighboring residents. Next slide, please. Here are photos of A Plus Tree Company. These are the massive-sized trucks that we saw when they were operating on the property. And my understanding in all of our community calls is these would be the same trucks that they would drive on, park in the large building they're proposing in the rear, and they would enter and exit that entrance that they're proposing a 40-foot buffer. Next slide, please. Here is a video clip of the sound. I'm not sure if that's... Can that volume turn up? I'm not sure if they can get that volume turned up on there. So I had taken a video over the summer where the trucks were operating, and those vehicles come with very loud beepers attached to the vehicles when they back up. And so that's for heavy equipment use, and that is what the video was going to show you as far as a, a noise buffer for our residents as we sit in our outdoor space, because our backyards face this property. Next slide, please. And here's a photo that we took that shows the driveway entrance that they're proposing. On the left-hand side, you'll see where the trucks would enter and exit. And then you can see a close-up on the right-hand side. That is the row of homes along Chancellor Place that would be significantly impacted, and were impacted in the past by the noise of the trucks. And despite paving the property, that will not reduce the fumes and emissions from commercial industrial trucks driving directly behind our properties. Next slide, please. From left to right, you'll see proximity to our indoor and outdoor living spaces. The first photo on the left is from the master bedroom on the second story, and you can see it sees clearly across this property. The middle photo is, the tree line there is where our two properties cross over. And you'll see our HVACs are in the back of our property, which that intakes outdoor air and pollutants. And then we have a common space area that would be affected where we sort of have a little dog station and little dogs kind of run around. Next slide, please. And just to point out, we are in opposition of this. There were some findings in the Planning Commission report that indicate this is inconsistent with the 2030 Comprehensive Plan and the future land use, and it is detrimental to abiding residential development. So we thank you for your time and consideration. We do oppose this rezoning, and many of our property owners have emailed you directly, as well as our city council, with our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
The next speaker is Jim Colly.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
I am Jim Colly. I am an owner of property on Chancellor Place in the Tryon Townhomes community, have been since 2012. A number of the property owners in this community are first-time homebuyers. With the exception of me, they're mostly a lot of younger, younger folks who are in their homes for the first time and have made a significant investment in their homes. I would just ask you to recall that the residential uses should be kept sacred. You cannot, in our opinion, you cannot condition this property, this zoning request in a way to make it compatible with residential. The proposed conditions for commercial and residential, I mean, commercial and industrial uses just do not result in a compatible use. And that is the primary purpose of, of zoning. Industrial uses are not compatible with residential uses as a matter of course. And I think your policies reflect that. So in sum, I, I would say our group, our homeowners group, of which I'm also a board member, and our population in this area oppose the zoning, and we'd ask you to recommend against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mark Sells.
Yes, I'm Mark Sells. I'm owner in University Woods and the president of the Homeowners Association. Generally speaking, we're concerned about the devaluing of our property. And that's, I can't cover any more than what's already been covered. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you keeping your comments brief.
One more person signed up to speak, but I do not see them listed. If there is a Katie Bean who has called in. I do not recognize the phone number. Tika, would you, or I'm, I'm, Chairperson Hicks, would you be okay if I unmuted the phone numbers just so I could check that we're not muted? Someone? Thank you very much. Okay, call-in user number two, I'm going to unmute you. If you could just state your name for us, that would be very helpful.
My name is Lila. Can you hear me?
Thank you, Lila. I can hear you. Are you here to speak on Z4920?
Yes.
Okay.
I wasn't able, okay, I wasn't able to let you know through the chat, but yes, I am. I am one of the residents on Chancellor Place. And I've been here since 2011. I'm kind of one of the oldest to, to be on this side of the Tryon Place Townhomes. And so what I would like to say is that it not be rezoned for reasons of health and safety. So my particular part is about safety. So one, we already know on the map, we in a small area from Trailwood to Gorman Street. And so if these big trucks are coming through anywhere between 6 o'clock a.m. to 8 o'clock at night, there is no way for them to get in their driveway but to make these U-turns. So between Trailwood and Gorman, we have three left turns. So these big trucks are going to come out off of I-40 trying to get to their, on the right-hand side of the community, making a U-turn. The speed limit is already 45 miles an hour. So the average person drives down Tryon Road, they are going at least 60 miles an hour coming through that intersection there. I know because I live here. And that, that could be a safety hazard for those of us that live in this neighborhood. One is because they, they're speeding, and then there is no, nowhere for them to be in an exit lane to, to go into their, their driveway. So that's a hazard for, you know, a safety for us. So it can cause many and multiple accidents, which can cause those accidents to come into the subdivision or right outside the subdivision, which inconvenes us in getting in and out of our homes in the evening, or even perhaps in the morning. And then another thing I wanted to say is that we lived here and we moved here because of, on the other side of the street is the county. So we're here in the residential area knowing that we can come home to some peace and quiet, and we don't have to be, you know, bothered by a commercial company next door. And for me, walking out of my front door, I don't want to see a fence to hide a commercial business. You know, the beauty of living on Tryon Road is that you have that country living. And last, I like to say, those of my neighbors that have pets, it's going to be inconvenient for them because their pets are going to be upset with all of the noise, the extra noise that's going on. You know, they're going to get anxiety because they're not going to quiet down until maybe 10, 12 o'clock at night because of the activities of what's going on with this, them rezoning and also putting in a commercial business. And that's what I wanted to say. So I asked commissioners if you would not rezone this area.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Chairperson, we have three other call-in users that are not signed up to speak for a particular case. If it would be okay, I'd like to unmute them and ask if they're here for this particular item.
Sure. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Caller number three, you're unmuted. Are you here to speak on Z4920 Tryon Road?
Uh, no, no, I'm not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Caller number four, you are unmuted. Are you here to speak on Z4920 Tryon Road? Can you hear us?
Hello?
Hello? Are, are you here to speak on Z4920 Tryon Road?
I am. This is Angela Watson.
Okay. Oh, please go ahead.
Okay, so I won't keep you guys very long, but I was one of those young homeowners that Jim was referencing earlier. So I bought my house in 2012. I was 25 or 26 at the time. And I remember when the tree company was here, because it would wake me up every single morning. Not only was it loud, but I could actually feel vibrations in my bedroom. My bedroom faces that side of the property. And so for me, it disturbed my peace for years. So it's very important for me to protect my home, protect my asset, and I would just ask that you guys would reconsider it and just keeping that, that area zoned as residential as it should have been the entire time. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more call-in. That's call-in user number seven. Call-in user number seven, are you here to speak on Z4920 Tryon Road? If you can hear us, we've unmuted you. Call-in user number seven. Okay, that, that is everyone that I have signed up to speak for this item. Chairperson, I received a message from the applicant stating that there are additional members of her team that she would like to speak, but that is up to you.
Okay, thank you very much. If the commissioners are all in agreement, I'd like to allow the applicant a few more minutes to, to speak. I'm getting a thumbs up. Yes, that'd be great. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. We had two other speakers that were supposed to be in our original presentation, so I'd like to call on Matt James of Withers.
Good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Good afternoon.
Great. John, could you please go to Slide Five, I believe? Yes, correct. As John and Isabel mentioned, the historical use of the property was as a junkyard. This historical use has contaminated the property. There are known heavy metals in soils on the property that will need to be remediated, whether this developed as residential or commercial. What Mr. Ellis is proposing to do is to go the route with the Brownfields property. You apply with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality with the Brownfield section, and then the Brownfield section helps you redevelop the property. They make sure that the waste or the contamination on-site is contained in a way that will not affect downgradient property owners. It is, in my experience, that commercial properties are more in line with development on contaminated properties than residential properties. The cost, the cost to get this remediated to residential standards is significant. Whereas the commercial, so for lack of a better word, it's just easier to redevelop. I understand the neighboring property owner's concerns. If you walked the property now, currently, you would see metal debris spread across the site. This metal debris is leaching into the soil, possibly leaching into groundwater, which will add to the contamination on-site. So we would like to see this property redeveloped in a timely manner through the Brownfields redevelopment program with North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality to improve the property. And that's what I have. I believe David Brown was next.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Hicks, members of Planning Commission, David Brown, Withers, Ravenel. I'd ask if Sarah could advance the slide. There is a sewer exhibit. There we go. Thank you. As we look at this property, whether for residential or commercial use, the sewer is a significant issue. As Isabel noted, it's an excellent location, and yet it has not been developed in spite of, you know, being zoned for almost 10 years. We do have a couple of points to make. In the Tryon Place Townhomes, at the end of Fieldstone Avenue, there is a sewer stub to the property. It's existing manhole, and it would serve a small It's existing manhole, and it would serve a small portion of the front of the site closest to Trion Road. Mr. Ellis is proposing a land use where he would locate his office buildings where they could access that sewer and the remainder of the site to the north closer to Interstate 40 would be land use that does not require sewer. If you, we have looked at this property over the years for a couple of different applicants. They have all elected that the sewer was such a significant issue. There is sewer located behind the Storage King about a quarter mile to the west on Trion Road. That sewer is not deep enough to serve this site. The next gravity sewer option is across Interstate 40. Again, about a quarter mile of sewer run under the interstate, kind of a Herculean task. In my past experience, none of that would be eligible for reimbursement, a really substantial cost. That would get you to studying this property for a pump station. And the city of Raleigh understandably has some criteria to allow either a private or a public pump station. We think this is not a good candidate. But just that there is a very significant hardship on the property is our point. And I will turn this back to Isabel.
Thank you.
Just to wrap it up, I want to go to the comp plan. The comp plan here calls for commercial mixed use, which would lend to, you know, CX zoning. And what John Enignoff said, this is CX plus the tree service. So CX would bring about commercial uses, but it calls out, it wants a shopping center like Cameron Village. Now, I just learned today that's not to be called Cameron Village, it's the Village District now. But that's, regardless of the name, it's unrealistic to think this type of shopping center could go in the site. It's too small, it's too narrow, it has a small amount of street frontage. The plan also designates this property as a mixed-use area, and we do propose mixed use with some retail on the front, some office in the middle, and light industrial to the rear. We propose a retail garden center adjacent to Trion and a small office building. We include significant protective conditions. If you go to Exhibit 7, you can see those. We restrict uses. We preserve the conservation management district. We also have prohibited any wood processing activities. We have required a significant buffer. We, you know, the staff report says we're inconsistent with the flume, which is, I guess, accurate, but we think it's arguable being overall consistent with the comp plan because we are proposing a mixed-use center. We are consistent with the urban form map. We are consistent with the private open space designation on the rear of the site. We do comply with an infill development policy. We believe we comply with policies on buffering noise and light impacts and screening unsightly uses by providing a significant buffer adjacent to residential and by restricting hours of operation. And finally, we think this case is reasonable and in the public interest because it will provide significant benefits. One, and most importantly, the remediation of significant environmental contamination under Brownfields Agreement with the state of North Carolina that will make the site safer for the adjacent residential neighbors and users of this property. We will have a mixed-use development. We think we're consistent with several aspects of the comprehensive plan, urban form, private open space, and many of the policies. Importantly, we will provide for a transformation of a blighted and contaminated site into an attractive one, a moving and deserted, unattractive destination for nefarious activities. And we think it's important to support a minority-owned business which provides jobs and a necessary service to the citizens of Raleigh in a convenient location. And with that, our team is all available for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so now I'd like to allow for questions and comments from commissioners. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Commissioner Winters?
Thank you. Also, everyone, thank you for your presentations and as well as the emails that we've seen from both parties. My question is about the previous junkyard. I'm curious how it goes from being a junkyard to then being zoned residential.
I can answer that if you'd like.
Yes, thank you.
This property was a junkyard for many years, and then in 2006, 2007, it was rezoned. And actually, that was my case. We rezoned it to residential because the buyer, excuse me, the owner had a buyer who was interested in doing a residential development there. But for many reasons, many of which you've heard today, I think the sewer being one of the very biggest, they decided they couldn't do that. So after the zoning was approved, they ended up walking away from the deal so that the current owner still owned it with very tight residential zoning conditions on the site.
Commissioner Lampman?
Along those lines, so it sounds, you know, that contamination, does that go into the record? This might be more for staff. How do you manage something like that so it won't be zoned residential? Or does that go on the record somehow?
That's something that the applicant in the development plan would be obligated to disclose as part of their development plan, is my understanding. I don't know that necessarily has to be disclosed during your rezoning process. And we don't keep a database of that for the rezoned program.
Commissioner O'Haver?
Thank you, Chair Hicks. I guess my question for staff is, in looking at the IMAPs and the future land use, the UDO and the comp plan, the form calls for CX in this area. The zoning is R-10, and as Ms. Maddox stated, says that CX is the primary corresponding zoning, which allows unlimited uses, retention centers, light manufacturing, research and development, self-service storage, car wash, vehicle repair. These are all either permitted or limited uses. So I guess my question is, I'm trying to reconcile, because I certainly understand the neighbor's concerns, and to echo Commissioner Winters, yes, thank you for the emails. We read through all those. I'm trying to reconcile how we can apply a CX zoning that's calling for a Cameron Village-like retail, and the primary corresponding zoning is CX, which allows these uses, but it's zoned R-10. Those don't seem compatible to me. How do I reconcile that, I guess?
That's a staff question?
I think so.
Okay. I think in this case, the angel is in the details, as it were. So you do mention that there are limited use standards that apply to many of those uses, and I think those limited use standards are critical to the application of those uses, especially in proximity to residential areas, particularly the car wash is a good example of that, that there are pretty restrictive limited use standards on a car wash. The other thing I'll note about those uses is that light manufacturing and research and development, again, the angel is in the details in the sense of the definitions of those uses clearly indicate that the activities taking place occur indoors. And while the applicant is asserting that these trucks will be stored indoors, there is the aspect that they have to traverse the site to reach the shelter where they will be stored, and that involves crossing the path of the homes that are nearby. And again, the details are important. So whereas CX and community mixed use are closely aligned from a general perspective, the reason that we have hundreds of policies in the comprehensive plan is that each zoning site is its own very specific and unique context, and that has to be taken into account. So between all of those factors, that's why you see the analysis that's in the staff report.
If I could follow up to you, again, I did drive the site over the weekend in the area. And where we show in the future land use, and again, I'm just trying to reconcile here, the community mixed-use zone goes all the way up to Lake Dam Road. And the uses on that site, you've got the adjacent townhomes, you've got this site, you've got self-storage, two single-family homes, you cross Gorman, and you've got a golf cart retailer, restaurant supply and warehouses, more self-storage, and a gas station. So again, if I'm just looking at the context of this and trying to reconcile what the future land uses are, notwithstanding the concerns of the neighbors, because I understand those, I'm just struggling a little bit with how we find ourselves here. But thank you for the response.
Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Chair Hicks. I'm sort of struggling a little bit, like Commissioner O'Haver. I absolutely understand the concerns of the neighbors. But I'm a bit sympathetic to the tree service owner as well, because, for a few reasons. But, so I'm from eastern North Carolina, sort of home of chicken farms, pig farms. And it is not uncommon for people to move adjacent to one of those and then complain about it. Now, I understand that this tree service was operating illegally, but it was there all these years. I'm curious if the city, I mean, were there complaints all these years about noise and light, dust, and all of these issues? And if not, then I'm wondering why they're suddenly going to become an issue, I guess. It also concerns me that it was a junkyard that got rezoned to residential that had a tree service operating on it. And now the tree service wants to come back and operate legally, but the neighbors are saying, we want it to remain residential. It sounds like it's never been residential. And it sounds like the future land use map isn't for it to be residential. So I feel like the neighbors are wanting it to be something that it's not planned to be and never has been. So that's my struggle is, I'm certainly sympathetic to them wanting a peaceful, healthy environment, but it doesn't sound like it's ever been that. And it doesn't sound like it's planned to be this nice residential area. It's planned to be commercial mixed use, which as Commissioner O'Haver mentioned, has all of these potential land uses. So I guess I'm just, I'm perplexed, I guess is the word, that it's residential to start with, with all this contamination and with the history that it has had.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Fox, did you?
I had a question for Ms. Maddox, I guess. I wanted to get, can you repeat the timeline of use to me again, of when it was the junkyard, when it was rezoned, and when the tree service started operation?
I can't give you the exact timeline right here, but I think it was in the early 2000s, maybe the junkyard use ceased early to, you know, 2005-ish, I would say, '04, '05. And then the rezoning happened, I think, in 2007, and Mr. Ellis and his A-plus tree service came in some years after that and have been operating there for several years as the tree service. I think that's the approximate timeline.
Would the committee like me to review the slides that I presented earlier showing that timeline?
That would be helpful. Thank you, John.
So this is the present day. And then you can see in 2004, this is the junkyard still in operation, and then the site has been cleared by 2008. And then in 2009, there's a pretty clear indication of the tree service, but also the site preparation and initial construction of Trion Place. And so it does appear to be that 2008, 2009 timeframe when the tree service activity started to pick up.
Commissioner Fox?
Just a quick follow-up. So during that time when it was a junkyard, it was under the same ownership, correct? Even though there was a different tenant?
Correct.
Okay.
The contractor's owned it since, I think, 1999.
Okay, so the contamination on it was the result of the owner allowing the junkyard to be there in the first place. And now they are experiencing some of the detriment of allowing a junkyard in that it is now contaminated.
I can't speak to what the owner knew about that. She did acquire it in 1999, and it was a junkyard at that point. But my thinking is that she, it was leased, and she may not have been aware of the contamination that was taking place.
Commissioner Mann?
So my question is, who owns the land now? Is it A-1 tree service? Or is it the owner of the junkyard service?
It's the same owner who's owned it since 1999. She's an individual who lives in Wake Forest.
Okay.
And she's leased it to the tree service and now has it under contract to sell it to the tree service, continued on the zoning.
Commissioner Bennett?
With regard to the heavy trucks and the trucks coming in and out, if it were rezoned commercial mixed use, which seems to be what the flume is, wouldn't there be trucks operating? I mean, coming for deliveries or whatever, aren't their trucks allowed under commercial mixed use as well?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
Commissioner, I think Commissioner Miller had her hand up, and then Commissioner O'Haver?
Thank you. For those maps that staff had with through previous years, do we have a way to look at what this site looked like in 1999? Or 1998?
We should. I think the applicant had that in their presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, we have aerials going back as early as '81 when it was a junkyard.
Gotcha.
Is there particular information that you'd like from those images?
Not necessarily. I know that they said that they suspected that this same activity was going on in 1999 at the time of the purchase, but it sounds like we're certain that it was.
Yes, I think so.
Commissioner O'Haver?
Let me have a question for Ms. Maddox. The limits of commercial operation from 7:00 to 8:00, what does that include? 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.?
It basically includes the workers coming to the site, getting the vehicles, taking them out to job sites, and bringing them back. And the reason it goes to 8:00 p.m. is for summertime hours. You know, these guys do work later in the summer because it's lighter later, and that was what Mr. Ellis wanted, to give them time so that if they have a job, and you know, a lot of times these jobs are kind of emergency situations. A tree falls on a house or blocks a road, and so they might have to work late to deal with whatever emergency has happened, a big storm or whatever. And so, you know, if they work, if it's light, they keep working, and just wanted to have the time so that they could get back and not be in violation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lampman?
This question might be a little irrelevant, but I appreciated the discussion on emergencies. I don't know how many major tree services like this we have in the local area that can help service, you know, kind of on that kind of scale. So I don't know if there are any other, it sounded like it actually might be something that would benefit the city of having a service, a tree service like that. city of having um, a service, a tree service like that in in within the district. I don't know.
Commissioner McIntosh.
Oh, sorry. I didn't want to interrupt if someone wanted to answer Commissioner Lattman's question.
Uh, well.
It was rhetorical.
Yeah, was that a question for me? Uh, I think that, yeah, there is, I don't know how many tree services there are. There's certainly a number of them around the city, but it does provide a service. And being centrally located allows him to more efficiently provide that service. Because if he has to go out, you know, on one edge of the of the city or the county or another, that's a lot farther for him to travel. So this is a pretty central location. It makes, makes his service a lot better and uses less fuel, et cetera.
Commissioner McIntosh.
Oh, yeah. I was wondering if staff could remind us, um, so are we saying the future land use map calls this a CX um, district? I apologize. And, oh, I'm sorry. My question is, what's the typical, what's the UDO, um, normal operation hour limitations for that district? Is there a, is there a limitation or can they be running 24 hours? Like, for example, truck deliveries to a grocery store?
Um, well, for uses that are allowed in the commercial mixed-use district, yes, the hours of operation are not restricted. But the requested use is not allowed in commercial.
Well, I guess I, I'm sorry. I was, what I was trying to get at is if this were developed for a different use, there probably was still, I would, I'm not wording this well, I apologize. Um, I was trying to follow up on something Commissioner Bennett was getting at, which is if this were developed for a different use, it sounds like there might also be truck traffic and it might actually go later than eight o'clock at night. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at. Sorry.
Commissioner Fox.
Can someone from the applicant team walk me through how the grading's going to work on the site? Um, specifically where the large um, garage is, if that's on the steep slope, um, how's that being graded?
I would call on Daniel Watley to answer that question if he can, or David Brown.
Uh, I can speak to that. Um, um, the, the back building in the paved area behind it would require quite a bit of fill soil. And part of the plan, which my colleague Matt could get into more detail on with regards to remediation, but part of the plan would actually be you could consolidate the pollutants within a buried slope condition and then pave it with asphalt, which essentially seals it in. Um, and so that's what you would be looking at is a large amount of fill soil to create a level enough area for the trucks to pull behind the building and then turn around into the building such that they're not having to go in reverse ever. Because they would, they would pull into the back of the building forward and they would pull forward out of the front of the building.
Uh, Commissioner Fox.
Would it require um, a series of retaining walls adjacent to the residential community?
No, it's it's level along the property line. If if any walls had to occur, they would be facing I-40.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Haver.
Yeah, a question for the applicant again. We got into the brownfields and the contamination. Um, and I, I want to make sure I understand either whether it be residential or industrial or commercial, it needs to be mitigated. Um, but you had mentioned that you, it was your understanding that it was easier to do the commercial. I thought we've heard before on other cases, um, that there were actually different types of restrictions for residential. Is that, am I correct in that? Or, and if I am correct, can you please talk a little bit more about what those restrictions, what the differences in the restrictions are, i.e., we've got the issues with sewer, contamination, et cetera, but with it being contaminated and and living on the site, are there additional restrictions that would prohibit that particular use or that density of use?
Matt?
That's a bad question.
Yes, I, this is Matthew James with Thivers Ravanelle. Um, yes, you are correct. Um, residential and commercial are allowed two different levels of contamination. Uh, residential is a much lower level, um, being, meaning the site has to be almost crystal clean. Uh, you're allowed higher levels of contamination with commercial districts, um, commercial properties, I should say. Uh, the main driver now within NCDQ is vapor. Um, they are very concerned of contaminated vapors uh, coming through the soils, through the foundation and into houses. Um, that, the Brownfields Group is pretty much across the board requiring vapor mitigation on any and all residential structures that are developed on the Brownfields property. And and the big concern there is young children and pregnant women. Um, obviously, it, the the levels of contamination affect newborn babies and pregnant women the most. Um, being that this is a commercial, hopefully, uh, and it goes through the Brownfields process, uh, DEQ will have a say in how the site is redeveloped, how the soil is handled, where soil goes, uh, when it's taken off-site, and what soil can be brought onsite. Uh, they will control all of that, um, which is the benefit uh, of a Brownfields agreement. Another benefit of a Brownfields agreement is you are allowed to keep contamination on your property. Um, you have to prove that it is capped, if you will, or contained so that it will not leach into groundwater or cause vapor concerns on the subject property or neighboring properties. Hope that answered your question.
Uh, if I, if I could, Commissioner Hicks, just, I, that sort of gets to what the requirements are. I guess I'm specifically asking, are there restrictions, i.e. you cap it, they require vapor, got to do additional mediation depending on the use. But it seems that I recall in some other discussions we've had about residential, we've had folks come and say that there's literally restrictions on what you can and can't do regardless of what's easier to clean up versus what's not. So I guess I'm just trying to drill down a little bit more in that and make sure.
Yes. So there are residential standards and commercial standards published by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. If you have any contaminant above residential standards, technically you cannot put a residential development on that property.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so I think um, we have one of two paths we can take at this point. Um, we can entertain a motion. Or if commissioners feel like they need additional discussion on this case, then I think it would be useful to um, provide some sort of specific feedback for the applicant for how they can, you know, make this case um, more compatible.
Chair Preston Hicks, uh, was for interrupting. Um, I received a message that there's a member of the public who would like to make additional comment, but that that is a choice of yours and the commission. So I just wanted to make you.
All right. Um, would folks like to, yes, I'm seeing nodding heads. Yep, that would be great. Thank you.
I will unmute them in one. Tricia Posey will be unmuted now.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. I appreciate, um, commissioners. Uh, I wrote down some of the questions that I heard you tossing around. Uh, I moved into my property in 2018. Uh, the land is actually um, listed for sale for residential. And if you pull up the for sale, it actually has a residential planning map of what could be built on that property. So when I bought my property, I was aware that it was zone residential. And even the realtor said, yeah, they're clearing it out. It's to be used for a residential build. So to see a tree company operating on there and seeing breakdown of trees and such, I did not know that that was actually a a business that was operating behind us. Uh, Ms. Maddox represents A-plus tree company, not directly the owner of the company, at least that's what was, or the owner of the property. And uh, that's what was shared with us in the community meetings. Uh, as far as my residents here, I did not really see the huge impact or find out from another neighbor that this company had been back there for several years. And neither did many of my new residents who live close in proximity to me. So we were all very surprised to find out that they were not clearing the land to build residential property. Um, that property was rezoned prior to try-on place homes being built. Our homes were built around uh, 2008, 2010, and and I believe maybe completed in 2012. So there, both areas were zoned residentially while the owner of that property was leasing it to a tree company, knowing that it was zoned residential. So a couple of things I wanted to restrict my comments on because I knew there were other speakers. I suffer from asthma, and I've stepped in my backyard and I cannot breathe and suffer asthma attacks when that tree company was back there. These are not small trucks. These are huge tractor-trailer trucks. You can see them out our window. It, and they have 20-plus vehicles that come and go every single day. It's not one or two trucks. This is a significant health impact. If you look at NIH studies, children who are exposed to this will develop asthma. This is not appropriate for residential uh, or commercial industrial use. I could see a small commercial property, but the trucks, that is just too much of a health hazard to even be considering exposing residents to those toxic fumes. I walked 10 feet from the property line from my backyard. I am very passionate about this subject. It is frustrating to me that for years they were allowed to operate there. And many homeowners, I work with land acquisitions in my employment, and so I went to my real estate services and said, this can't be right. And they connected me with the zoning office. But many normal residents don't know that. And during COVID, I was home, my, my house would shake. I had cracks in in my foundation because they were dropping large logs in our backyard. Now, I know they're not going to do that going forward, but I just want you to understand that, you know, those vehicles, those large vehicles, those fumes, the toxicity, it is very harmful to the health of human beings. And I know that if this were your property, you would be just as passionate about not having those vehicles in your backyard. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have. Um, but I do want you to know that many of the residents who are in these homes, we've, you know, we've moved and recently bought here. And so we thought we were buying next to a property that the homes were going to be built there.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Miller.
Could the resident, or I'm sorry, could the applicant um, address specifically how their business operations are going to change from um, how they were previously to the new proposed use? And and impact, obviously, a nuisance impact for the neighbors?
Yes. Um, first of all, the site will be paved, and so you won't have the dust, which would I'm sure contribute to some, some breathing, breathing issues. Um, having asthma myself, I'm familiar. Um, you know, secondly, you will have a, a wide buffer there. Um, and, you know, I think also, one of the the most, as I mentioned earlier, one of the most intense times that I think these particular neighbors experienced was, you know, early, mid 2020, when they had gotten the notice of violation. And and Mr. Ellis had to move all of his vehicles out in a fairly short amount of time. And so I think that was a lot of vehicular movement, a lot of um, noise that happened then. And and people were home more, so it it really compounded the issue. Um, it won't be, you know, if if he gets to have this business here, it won't be quite as intense that way. Um, you know, I think limiting the hours will 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 cut down on some, some of the noise. Um, but, you know, and we're open to to other suggestions, but I think the, the, the things that will mitigate those impacts are the buffer, the hours of operation, uh, the paving of the site, uh, which we think will help quite a bit.
And could you summarize again the changes to the buffer?
Say again?
Could you summarize again the changes to the buffer?
The buffer will be 40 feet wide, and it'll be the city's uh, opaque buffer. Um, I may have to let Daniel get into more detail than that, but it's, it's, the normal buffer in that location would be a 10 or 20-foot wide planted buffer. Um, and this will be 40 feet planted, uh, and a fence, a solid fence. Uh, Daniel, you might have something to add in terms of what the planting materials would be like.
And and could you also go over not just what the requirement is right now, but what is actually there right now? Or or has been there this past year?
Yeah, there is.
Because we saw some pictures.
There's some vegetation there. Daniel, can you speak to that a little bit better?
Sure. Um, what what's there now is, and some of the photos show this better, but what what's there now is technically no buffer. Um, there's some areas with with absolutely nothing. And then there's some volunteer trees along the property line, just where it wasn't um, cleared for the junkyard. So, but I I don't know what classification I would even give that. Um, it's not really a buffer at all. The, th- there's gaps in existing trees. Again, you know, you can see right through it. And so the, the change would be a 40-foot depth, meaning just the the driveway that the trucks would be driving on would probably be about 60 to 70 feet away from any house. And then 40 feet of that would be opaque wooden fence, evergreen shrubs planted five feet on center at a height of five feet at the time of installation, which is a pretty large shrub. You know, if you imagine an evergreen bush the size as tall as a person um, at the time of planting. And it would be mixed with evergreen understory trees, things like uh, green giant arbor body, Nellie Stevens holly, evergreen trees that reach a height of 30 to 40 feet. Um, and it would also require canopy trees, oaks, maples, things like that mixed in as well. So it it would be a solid visual screen from the ground plane up to a height of about 40 feet.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Lattman, did you have a question? No. Okay. Commissioner O'Haver.
Sorry. I know we're beating this one. Um, can the applicant pull back up the site plan? Um, and I don't know that I have a question yet, but I'd like to just look at that site plan while others um, ask questions. If, if, I guess the applicant can't do it. Maybe Sarah.
That's uh, our exhibit three. John, yeah.
All right. So can I just look at this for a second? I don't know that I have a question. I just want to get references.
Why, Commissioner O'Haver, while you're reviewing that?
Yeah, please call on others. Yeah, please. Sorry. I may not even have a question.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Miller.
I know the concern is about the type of trucks that are being used here because we've already determined that commercial trucks could be, could come in with the CX zoning. Is there a difference between the type of trucks that could, that are allowed to move in and out with the proposed rezoning versus in a CX district?
Are you asking, is that for staff or for?
That's for staff.
Um, no, not, there there'd be no regulatory control of that through zoning.
And maybe a follow-up question for the applicant. I noticed on the site plan that this is one-way traffic. A lot of the concern on the noise side, it's about the backing up and the beeping. A lot of the concerns on the noise side, it's about the backing up and the beeping. Do you anticipate, have you taken that into account when you're designing the traffic flow in the garage in the back?
It is designed for that. If you speak to any auto insurance agent, they can, they can tell you the number one cause of, of accidents and liabilities with vehicles is the second you put it in reverse. And so regardless of the noise, it's a good practice to minimize conflicts, especially when you have a fleet of vehicles that you're operating. And so this is intended to allow for a truck of the size we're talking about to do a full turn forward behind the building and pull into the back of the building. And then when it's time to leave in the mornings, there's a garage door at the front and they pull forward out of the front of the building. So they're essentially never having to put it in reverse.
Okay. Thank you. And I, can I ask that the, if folks are finished looking at the, the image here, if we could have it taken down so I can see, see if commissioners have their hands up. I did see Commissioner Ohaver's hand up.
Thanks, Commissioner Hicks. Yeah, it's hard. You gotta pull the two screens separate and it's hard to figure out what's going on. So I guess my question is, all of the equipment and trucks each night are parked in that building. There's no trucks in the asphalt. It's all closed up in that garage each night. Is that correct?
Daniel.
I'm not sure that I'm 100% qualified to answer that. Kenny would, the owner would be the, or our client would be the best person to answer that, but that, that's my understanding. I think small, you know, traditional cars would be parked outside for their employees coming to work each day to park their cars. And there, there may be equipment that is stored outside, such as skid steers and things like that, but I, I don't know. I would need our client to comment on that.
Okay. So I just wanted to try to summarize what our conversation has been thus far. It sounds like, you know, the current zoning is R10. We've heard that there's some difficulties in terms of the brown field and decontaminating the site to put residential on the lot of that type, as well as just some logistical things related to sewer for the, that use on that site. CX is recommended per the future land use map, which would allow a variety of commercial uses, which could include cars and trucks potentially. However, the CX does not allow for what's called a contractor yard, which this type of use that they're asking for would fall under that category. And then we've also heard comments and concerns about currently the use of the site with noise and fumes and issues of potentially safety. And so I'd like to bring it back to the table and either find, give some guidance to the applicant for how they can adjust this case to make it, you know, stronger and more a case that we can vote on and pass potentially. Or go ahead and make a motion to either approve or deny. Commissioner Miller.
Did the applicant consider, if the concerns are mainly about the truck, I noticed the driveway is on the east side adjacent, abutting the residential district. Do they consider putting it on the west side?
Yes. Yes, but I think NC, or I think NC DOT or City of Raleigh wanted the driveway in that location to minimize conflicts with other driveways on try-on. And Daniel, you can confirm that. And also the shape of the lot really makes it difficult to bring a straight driveway in because we could jigs and jags on the left side, the west side. If you put the site plan back up on exhibit three, you'll see what I'm talking about. But, but I think primarily it was the, the, the location of the access point was dictated by city or state transportation folks. Daniel, can you jump in on that?
That's correct. It's, it's really being driven by the self-storage properties driveway. You can't have a driveway too close to another driveway. And that's, so that's from City of Raleigh Transportation Engineers.
Okay. I think Commissioner Winters had her hand up a moment. No, you're shaking your head. Okay, Commissioner Ohaver.
Just a procedural question. So where you're at, if we make a motion, we're making a motion to put this back out to the full commission, correct? We're not recommending approval or denial, or are we?
So you can make your recommendation either for approval, denial, or send it back to the planning commission without a recommendation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Miller.
So I'm, I'm happy to share my thoughts. Generally, it sounds like the neighbors' primary concerns are about noise and other nuisances from the truck. But at the same time, these, those same nuisances could occur under the CX zoning district. And in fact, this case actually provides conditions that would limit the impact of those more than with the CX zoning district, in particular the hours of operation and the significant additional buffering that they're talking about putting in. I, I have, you know, am concerned generally about a policy issue that this property owner has purchased it as a junkyard and I guess now wants it zoned in a way that, that could, I guess, benefit from the remediation if we're like trying to think about some of those, that general policy issue. Initially, I was concerned about weighing that against folks that moved to a nuisance and trying to change it next door, but it sounds like that was not the case. And then, but, but on par, the, I, I think for me, it's the environmental remediation that's actually going to occur at this site is something that is obviously needed throughout sites like these in our city and would do significant good in this area. So for all of those reasons, I'm inclined to recommend approval of this project based on what we, what we currently hear.
Thank you. Commissioner Ohaver.
Sorry, one other procedural question. If we recommend this out to the full commission as approval, we have additional conversation and have to vote again for approval or denial, or does it go through as approved? Or we, we continue in this conversation at the full commission if we recommend approval now?
Steph can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it'll go back to the planning, full planning commission and we will take a vote on it. But we don't typically hear additional presentations from the applicant or the public at that point.
Okay, if, if, if I could add, I guess part of my concern, I, I hear the health and the environmental issues, but I also heard it sort of being unsightly, some questions about values, et cetera. I, I really would like to understand what's going to be in that facility versus what's out. And, you know, those diesel trucks, I understand, have to warm up a certain amount of time. Is that occurring? I mean, are they, are they mitigating that through the garage or their HVAC systems take care of it? I mean, I, I'd like to know a little bit more about that would, would make me feel better. But I, I will sort of go with the commission if we're ready to vote this out now.
Thank you. So so Commissioner Lampman.
Commissioner Ohaver, that was kind of a good point that I hadn't considered about warming up those diesel trucks. And is there an opportunity to require anything from the building itself to, because I mean, are we getting really specific in the zoning approvals so that this can't really be any other product except the tree service? And then can we say anything about the, you know, noise cancellation of the building and building materials or the HVAC or anything that provides any sort of filtration for air pollutants? I mean, they are right off of a major freeway, by the way. I just, I think, you know, we should note that, that there's a considerable amount of pollution that's occurring just right in that area. But I don't know if we can get that detailed.
So this is Daniel with Weathers. In, in a previous life, before I was a landscape architect, I was a landscape contractor. And our shop had, it was a similar type facility. And the, the garage that we're talking about, it's an unheated, unair-conditioned space. And so in the mornings, you open the, the back doors and the front doors and the trucks warm up in place inside the building where they park. And then you just pull out. And so if you imagine a series of garage doors, 20 feet tall, 20 feet wide, when you open them all, it's plenty of ventilation. And so that, that's how it would work. They wouldn't pull out of the building and then sit there warming up outside.
So I had just two comments. I'm, I'm a little bit torn on this project as well, so, or this case as well. And so anyway, I struggle with making a motion myself. I think one, you know, item to note is by remediating and brownfielding this site, there, the potentially, the redevelopment of this site would be improving environmental conditions or contaminants. I mean, that, that could be a concern to the adjacent property. And my other point was just thinking about sort of the, the facts that are before us in, in the staff report and, and the facts that we've heard today. CX does seem like a reasonable ask for here based on the future land use map. However, I don't see a lot of support for a contractor's yard in this location and adjacent to existing residential. So that's sort of where I stand at this moment. Commissioner Lampman.
The, the other thing that I kind of appreciated too is the discussion of having a service like this that is so close to the city where, you know, we do have, you know, hurricanes and other issues that can come through and have a major impact. And this does provide close proximity, you know, for things like that. We don't, as we continue to build out, those types of services will get first, further and further out as well. So when we do have major catastrophes or any sort of major event, that is a service now that's readily available. It's not, this is not a public service, it's a private service. So something just to think about, one of the reasons why I'm leaning more towards approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Ohaver.
All right. I I'll, I'll make a, I'll make a recommendation. I think this site is not going to be residential. Is it going to be a yard? I'm not sure. The contamination is on a freeway. I do certainly understand the concerns about visual clutter or health issues. I think we, we a lot of times go back to if it's not rezoned, what can be there? And I think we talked a lot around what can happen in CX and there are some additional restrictions. Again, I'm torn on this one, but I will move to recommend approval of rezoning Z4920. I wasn't ready to do this, so I'm trying to get all my stuff in place. I'm, I'm really torn on this one, so just give me a second here.
Thank you. Take your time.
The rezoning request is reasonable in the public interest because it's supported by the specific policies in the comprehensive plan, encouraging nodal development, development of vacant sites, creating retail. I guess I need to list those, policy LU 7.1, policy LU 8.11, and then policy LU 10.6. And I think, David, I need to acknowledge that though it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, I, I guess I did say that, that it's reasonable in the public's best interest.
Did you reference the flume, the future land use map?
That the future land use map? What do I need to reference? I'm sorry, David.
I believe the staff report is prepared. It indicates that the, the rezoning is inconsistent with the future land use map. An approval of the zoning would result in an amendment to the future land use map to, to business and service. Is that what it said?
Business and commercial services.
Yeah, business and commercial services from a community mixed use.
Okay, that's a lot to say. I don't see it in staff reports. I recognize that the, the future land use map is inconsistent and will need to be changed as noted. But I, but I would also like to mention, David, I think, you know, I've talked about this, that the consistent, I mean, the, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the area, with that area, with the existing uses there with gas stations, self-stored stations, warehouses. And so that's why I am, I'm voting to move for approval, even though it's inconsistent, but we need to change the flume. I butchered that one up really well.
You did great. Thank you. So we have a, a motion to approve by Commissioner Ohaver and Commissioner Lampman.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Lampman. I will ask Janitha for a roll call.
Commissioner Bennett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fox?
Nay.
Chair, I'm sorry, Chair Hicks?
Nay.
Commissioner Lampman?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann?
Aye.
Commissioner McIntosh?
Nay.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Ohaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Winters?
Aye.
So that's six ayes and three nays. So the motion passes. Thank you all for a very robust conversation and to the, and to the applicant. We will now move on to item three, which is our final item today. And that is rezoning Z2220. That's the East End Market PD. And this is the first time we're hearing this case. Ira Mabel will present on behalf of city staff.
Chair Hicks?
Yes.
Sorry. I need to recuse myself from this hearing as, as my firm is involved in the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Ohaver.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Ira Mabel, Plan Development. So this is a request, Z2220. Quite a number of properties on Wake Forest Road, East Twitter Road and Progress Court, building just over 11 acres. Currently quite a variety of zoning districts on the site and the request is for a planned development district. Just a reminder for the commission and also for people who are joining us, Plan Development or PD is a special zoning district. So allows applicants to offer alternatives to the Unified Development Ordinance that are less restrictive. But they also have to submit much more detail than a standard rezoning case. The idea of being that you can get relief from some parts of the code and, and the, the city and the public gets a more specificity and higher degree of design is the intent of this district. There are only, there are certain chapters of the, of the UDO that you are allowed to There are only, there are certain chapters of the, of the UDO that you are allowed to change and those are the ones. And I will have a summary slide of what they're actually asking to change later on. So the site currently is, isn't a bit of a transition area. You can see quite a lot of IX, so the same, the same district we were just talking about to the east and then quite a bit of residential, residential ten or R10 to the north and west. So a bit in the transition in between. There's a, some nearby landmarks for reference. There's the Greyhound Bus Station not far away on Capitol Boulevard, the Five Point Center. For active adults is a little bit further west on Whittaker Mill Road. And then a bit closer up, so these are some, some of the sites that are referenced by name in the staff report. In particular, there's the apartment buildings on Mill Street, 1002 Mill Street. The Old Town Village Townhouses on Cotton Exchange Court there. It's like the notch on the, on the western side of the site. And then there's an auto repair garage on the corner there that is also not included in the PD. So when I reference those in the staff report, this is, this slide is to help you orient where those things are. So some photos, again, number one are the townhouses and number, number two is the garage on the corner. You can see the dash line there representing, you know, the, the boundary of the actual rezoning district behind the buildings. And then picture number three is a photo of some of the, some of the existing warehouse style commercial uses on the, on the eastern half, basically of the site that, that are there today. So a really high level summary, the Plan Development District starts with a base district. So when I talk about modifying parts of the UDO, you have to start by saying, you know, for everything, you're not modifying, which district applies to you. And so then the parts that you are modifying are from a specific district. So in this case, the base district, as we call it, is commercial mixed use or CX. And so all modifications are like, if CX were here, how would you modify the, or what modifications are requesting from there? And there are three, the master plan specifies three areas of height, which I'll show a bit later. And has entitlement for quite a bit of variety, calls out specifically residential office, retail and restaurant. And has some language that says anything that's not expressly prohibited could fall under the office umbrella. So a lot of things in CX would be allowed in different parts of the site. This is the, the master plan they proposed. So this shows the street, the block layout and building footprints. And there are five tracks. So when the narrative talks about ABC and D, there's sort of two existing already on the easternmost side. And then the other three would be new, recombined from, from all the other lots that currently exist today. Here is the, the height breakdown. So three of the tracks would have a maximum height of seven stories. In like the center and eastern side of the site. One of the tracks has a maximum height of five stories. That's the northernmost, that green one. And then the corner site, the corner lot would have a maximum of 15 stories. And then this is showing where the use breakdown would be. So apartment, building, mixed apartment retail, and then where the, the office usage would be. So the entitlement does increase, you know, just about doubling max number of units, not quite as, as tall as you would expect, just thinking of 15 stories, but they, there is a hard cap specified in the, in the request. So those numbers, the 334508, the 9, 9, 9,012, those are all not estimates, those are specifically spelled out. The existing zoning are estimates and this, the zoning on the site is a bit, you know, complex because there are so many districts. So a mix of scenarios would be required to meet any of those maxes, but what we're considering. PDs are required to also have 3D renderings. I like to point out, these are not binding, they're examples from the applicant of what could be built here. So these are real rough estimates. Really the building footprint specifies where a building can go, but does not necessarily mean the buildings will actually look like this or fill out that footprint in the same way as, as these renderings do. And this, this applicant has a couple of ones in color. PDs are also required to include a traffic impact analysis. So the results of this TIA are that no intersection that was studied would operate overall at a level of service that's unacceptable. But there were some intersections that were projected to operate at a low level of service during, during peak hours. And the TIA has recommended some, basically some restripings of turn lanes to mitigate that level of service. And so the way this works is the, the applicant hires a traffic engineer and they do the study and includes the mitigation recommendations. And then the city agrees and accepts the TIA. So transportation staff, I'm sure would be happy to answer specifics about what's in the TIA, but pretty minimal results for the mitigation of the increased, increased entitlement here. So I, I have just two summary slides about what the modifications from the UDO that they're requesting. I, I'd be happy to go into any individual one if you have any questions. But just an overview, I broke into two. So one grouping of, of modifications to the building. There would be no setbacks. Well, there would be setbacks, building setbacks that apply to Wake Forest and Whittaker Mill Road, but not internal to the site. And the same is true for bill two standards. Those would apply to Wake Forest and Whittaker Mill, but not internally. And then they've requested some exemptions from the, the building mapping for tall buildings. For the most part, that really just applies to the, to the 15-story section. Those, those standards that exist in the UDO today really don't kick in until, until you get a building that's over seven stories. So and then some, some exemption, requests of modifications to site, the site regulations. So no outdoor amenity area. They would still be required to have 10% open space. You're not allowed to exempt yourself from that in a PD. Amenity areas for apartment type buildings and that can be all sorts of stuff, including, you know, a pool or a patio or something. Exempted from that, exempted from the neighborhood. They've set their own parking minimums. Basically just replaced entirely the city standards with their own minimums. And exempted themselves from cross access requirements, which I might think I'll talk about a little bit later. And they specified their own street cross sections. It's a little bit different than the existing street cross sections we have in the, in the city manual. So there are some prohibited uses, like I said before, anything not on this list that is allowed in CX could go where they say office can go. But they're prohibiting outright gas stations, you know, vehicle repair, self-service storage. So some, some of the more intense uses in CX are prohibited everywhere. The request is inconsistent with the future land use map. From a use point of view, it's, it's not too far off. So you can see two designations here in the site, moderate density residential and neighborhood mixed use. So you know, a mixed use developed district with office and some retail and residential in concept could be consistent with the flume. But it is definitely inconsistent with the, the height recommendations that we have for higher density and mixed use, neighborhood mixed use. So inconsistent with this map. It is consistent with the urban form map. A good, a good portion of the site is in a city growth center, which is sort of what it says, what it sounds like, a place where this, we recommend or envision a lot of growth happening in the city. And Wake Forest Road is a transit emphasis corridor, which is a corridor intended for high frequency transit, so a high level of transit service. So both of those things are places where the comprehensive plan envisions both growth and also a like walkable urban area, which is, which is basically what their master plan is showing. It is inconsistent overall with the comprehensive plan. So I'll jump to the policies to explain why that is. Consistent with policies that say, you know, compact development, so mixed use districts like this, like true mixed use districts are generally in line with, with city growth centers and transit emphasis corridors. The, the inconsistent policies, there's really two categories. One is about connectivity. So there's a couple of, of connectivity issues. One, as I mentioned before, they exempted themselves from some cross access requirements, which I think staff would, would prefer to see. And then there's some other, they, they're, what they are offering for cross access, I think staff says could be improved. And then the other broad category, which are really all the LU five and then point one on down are transitions. And that mostly, in my opinion, has to do with the, the townhouses and the, and the garage on the corner. Which I think will be most affected by transitions. They're basically surrounded on all sides by this PD. And so what standards are in place to, to accommodate those sites as they are and the potential redevelopment of those sites. So just like the volume, if I can go back a slide, the volume of this sort of sales of policies of inconsistent versus consistent led me to a inconsistent overall for the concept that is today. The, the flume inconsistency means it would trigger a change to that map. So it would match what is the equivalent to the base district. So I have here is changed to community mixed use for the site. And there are some outstanding issues. This is a bit weird. There was a technical issue with staff review of the, one of their submissions. Generally, Plan Development go through a couple of rounds of staff review because they are more complicated. And there was a technical issue where staff did not execute a timely review of the third submission. So you know, it's, we brought it forward to you today to get some initial feedback and let the neighbors have their, their say and let you comment as you want to the, to the applicant. Because it was not a fault of the applicant that happened. But there are some outstanding issues that, that staff still has flagged. That I believe could, could be easily, I would only say easily, but see, to be able to be resolved. So I think would be, and I think Jason Myers from Transportation, who is here to answer any questions, thinks it would be appropriate for you to delay recommendation today. I think the applicant is prepared for PD cases to take two times the committee the whole. I don't think that's a surprise to them, but I just wanted to flag that as, as why those issues are still outstanding. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you for that presentation. Now I'd like to allow for the applicant to present.
Good evening, Men Chair. Michael Burge with Lonely Fall Partners. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Welcome.
Great, thank you. While I get started, believe, yeah, thank you, Ira. So we are here tonight with local development team partnering, partnership between Atlas Stark and SLI Capital, doing a number of developments in and around Raleigh. We also believe have on the line with us Ross Massey from Stewart Engineering, Rob Allen from Ginsler Architect Team. So you know, Ira has given you a great overview of the property and the request. And so Ira, if you could push it forward maybe two or three slides until you get to the real colorful map. Yep, that one right there. Thank you. As you heard, this master plan proposes a mixed use development with office, residential, ground level retail, restaurant uses. Those retail restaurant uses are intended to serve the, both the occupants and the residents of the proposed development, but also the surrounding neighborhoods. I think we often view these requests kind of on a micro level, you know, kind of a, just very kind of narrow, narrow area maybe, but I think it's important to kind of understand how this property and how this master plan request fits within the broader area and what's happening in this area of the city. It's an important location between midtown and downtown. It's complementary to what's going on at Dock 1053 and Raleigh Iron Works across the railroad and Atlantic Avenue to the east. So this map highlights North Hill. So the, the site is there titled East End Market in blue. They're kind of in, in the middle site there. And then this is just an overlay of the city's urban form map. North Hills, North Hills East, Midtown Exchange. Right around two, two miles away. Midtown Exchange, you know, planned 40 acre mixed use development, Midtown East with Wegmans, Hill Holly Park Shopping Center just up the road. And just under two miles from downtown Smoky Hollow and Seaboard Station. So again, just strategically located, kind of in this growth center, this growth corridor between downtown and North Hills. Also want to emphasize that we think this is the right location for this type of development, given the cities and the counties and others' investment in bus rapid transit, more frequent bus transit, bike, pedestrian infrastructure like Greenway and Greenways in this area and bike lanes. Y'all had it on your agenda today, although I know you kind of delved into it in more depth at previous meetings, but the equitable development round transit plan, you know, highlights that this site is along the Transit Emphasis Corridor. It's proximate to the frequent bus transit route at Atlantic Avenue. It is within overlapping transit station area radii of two emerging urban centers. It's proximate to the Crabtree Creek Trail, less than a half mile to the north. Then there's the planned Kitchen House Greenway and planned North Boulevard Park to the south. Dedicated bike lanes are called for on both for Wake Forest Road and Whittaker Mill Road. Would just note that this project is providing a kind of a separated above curve 10-foot wide multi-use path both along Wake Forest Road and Whittaker Mill Road along our frontage in hopes of kind of setting a stage or similar improvements in the area. And I know that this is consistent with what's called for in the Midtown Area Plan, which is kind of located north of, of this development. And then finally, just want to note that this is, this property has access to sufficient transportation infrastructure, street grid allows for the distribution of traffic and can accommodate, infrastructure to accommodate the vehicular traffic generated by this development. These are the areas where we want to prioritize density. This is where the city is directing, you know, the type of mixed use development being proposed by this master plan. So if you could, Ira, move the slide forward to two clicks please, to the development plan. This is similar to what you saw in staff's presentation. Want to highlight give you a feel of what the vision is and we'll show a couple of renderings here in a minute, but kind of want you to picture coming into the site off of Whittaker Mill Road, which is on the, kind of the bottom of the page. So kind of head north in between Track B and Track C. So kind of head north in between track B and track C. Track B is planned for one to two story retail restaurant uses. You see that we've identified that as a location for open space as well to kind of serve as a gathering area for people who are visiting the restaurants there. We also plan retail on the left-hand side in the ground floor of the office building. As you come into the development, you kind of see the corner of the building at track D. That's a ground level retail restaurant with apartment units above wrapping a parking deck. But again, ground level, ground level activity in track D. And on your right in track A, right now you have a dilapidated warehouse that is planned to be renovated, rehabilitated and used for creative office space and restaurant uses. It's a little hard to see on this map, but the building backs up to the railroad and out front of it, you have our open space that runs really the length of that existing warehouse building at a width of 40 feet, about 30 feet of a green open space and then a 10-foot sidewalk. But really that open area really draws folks to that space. Again, we anticipate having restaurants on that big green and also retail across the street on the ground floor of that apartment building. If you came in off of Wake Forest Road in between track C and track D, we anticipate having retail on the ground floor on both sides of that street. Might be able to tell we are proposing as a part of our street cross sections, bump outs, on-street parking, trees in tree grates, sidewalks that have eight-foot clear passage. Trying to create an urban pedestrian friendly environment in this kind of mixed use area here. And then as you transition, you kind of pass track D into track E, that is kind of the pure residential apartment building portion of the project. So just kind of wanted to give you a vision for how things flow. And we'll also just note that height also transitions from the south to the north, 15 stories in track C, seven stories in track D, five stories in track E. And also highlight, we're in an urban area, and so we're treating stormwater in an urban way with underground facilities. And we will be connecting to existing piped infrastructure. So all of the stormwater detention treatment is being handled underground. If you could go to the next page, please. And so wanted to give you just a sense of the vision for this development. This is as if you were kind of standing in Whittaker Mill Road looking north. So on the right-hand side, that's track B where those one and two-story retail restaurant spaces would be with the existing warehouse and open space out front. They're kind of in the background in track A. The office building with ground level retail is kind of in the foreground on the left-hand side with the seven-story apartment building in the background. We go to the next slide. So this is kind of out front in that area, being kind of transitioning towards the towards the warehouse. That's a little bit further in the back of the creative office space and restaurant retail areas. And if you go to the next slide, this is a view looking northeast. You see in the foreground, the existing kind of auto repair shop at the hard corner. You see the office building above structured parking with kind of some retail jewel boxes along Whittaker Mill Road with the seven-story and five-story apartment buildings as you head north along Wake Forest Road. But really, we see this and as an iconic location, the opportunity for iconic development and building that respects that. Want to touch on traffic and this was a master plan, and I know for, for you all that were in the transportation committee, you had a conversation today about TIA's in the rezoning process. But the TIA was required and performed as a part of this rezoning. And I want to emphasize that no intersection operates at an overall unacceptable level of service. As a result of this development and kind of the build-out year of 2024. So looking into the build-out year, three, four years down the road, with this development and other development occurring around the area, no level of service for an overall intersection will operate at an unacceptable level of service. The staff report noted that there are some, and I just want to highlight this. There are some specific approaches. So that operate at a level of service F. Not again, overall intersection levels of service, but just level of service associated with one particular movement or approach at an intersection in one of the peak hours. And I want to highlight some of those for you. One of those is at Hodges and Wake Forest Road, so north of the site. That currently operates at a level of service F and in the build scenario in 2024, we're only affecting that by half a second. For the East Whittaker Mill Road and Atlantic Avenue, there's a westbound approach in the afternoon. This development is really only impacting that by about six and a half seconds. And really, the impact to that intersection is by the Raleigh Iron Works development to our east. There's also the Whittaker Mill Road and Wake Forest Road approach the westbound in the morning already in F. And we're impacting that by five seconds. That's a difference between the delay today of 85 seconds to a delay, an additional five-second delay in 2024 with this project on the ground. The other two approaches are at Wake Forest Road and Mill Street, so just to the north. In the AM, we're only affecting the eastbound movement by one second. It's already enough from 105 seconds to 106 seconds of delay. And then there's also the westbound movement there. It's already enough, and we're affecting that by about 11 seconds above the background traffic in 2024. So I just want to, I wanted to go through each of those because I anticipated traffic maybe being a topic of conversation, but wanted to highlight that no intersection is degraded to an unacceptable level of service. And of the approaches that are planned to operate in enough, many of them are already operating at enough and that this project is really having a very minor impact on delay. So if you could go to the next, well, next slide, please. We have held two neighborhood meetings and have also had a couple of calls with individuals. Our most recent, our second neighborhood meeting was held earlier this month. Based on comments particularly from folks along Mill Street and in the off Cotton Exchange and those townhomes, we are attempting to address their comments by making a few updates to address the, the transitions in those areas. We're attempting to set up some meetings for next week. And if you could go to the next slide, we are also based on some other feedback, planning to update of our prohibited use list, add some uses there and also just further emphasize the residential nature of track E. So if you go back two slides, just want to conclude. Just highlight that this request is consistent with the urban format. It is consistent with a number of the comprehensive plan policies, understanding that we are inconsistent really with connectivity and transition policies. I think this is reasonable and in the public interest because it creates a mixed use development in a city growth center. Locating additional housing opportunities, office, retail, restaurant uses that are along a transit emphasis corridor in proximity to bike, ped, greenway infrastructure. And it's accommodating growth in an area with sufficient transportation infrastructure, but also with a mix of uses and in proximity to existing neighborhoods that can reduce the need for vehicle trips. So with that, just want to say thank you for taking time to review this. For our presentation, I mentioned we have some other folks on the line, but not necessarily scheduled to talk. So happy to address any questions or comments from the planning commission. And I think there are also some folks from the community that have signed up to speak and just would ask for an opportunity to address the planning commission after, after that.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Birch.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'd like to allow for a public comment. There are members of the public in the meeting today who would like to provide comments, and I would ask the moderator to introduce the speakers one at a time. Again, I've asked the speakers to be respectful of our time and not be duplicative. Can the moderator please introduce the first speaker?
Sure. The first speaker is Beth Carmichael.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. So first I just want to say thank you to everybody for giving us an opportunity to make our, our voices heard on this issue. So I live in Cotton Exchange Court and you know, I have to say I've lived here for probably, I think 12 years. And when I bought my townhouse here, there was never any doubt in my mind, nor has there been any doubt in the minds of other people who have come after me that the property surrounding us would eventually be redeveloped. When we've had conversations in, in our community about what that development would look like, we anticipated that it would, you know, be a, possibly a another townhouse community or some type of a condo community that would be built back behind us. But the, the scale and the scope of what has been proposed is, it is beyond any of our expectations, anything we could have ever imagined that someone would have thought would be appropriate for this site and particularly as it surrounds our property so completely. So I mean, I hope that, that I can just communicate the depth of our concern around just, just how much this project, this proposed project just dwarfs our community and, and and makes it feel just inappropriate for, for the space. Whereas, you know, a differently planned proposal could, could integrate better with, with our community. So I have some specific concerns that I want to draw your attention to. The first is just the scale of the proposed buildings and, and where they are located in relation to our townhouses. All of the zoning that is currently in place specifies a maximum height of three stories for any buildings. And this plan development proposal specifies that buildings immediately beyond our property line would be like seven stories, the ones that are directly surrounding us are, are seven stories tall. And I'm talking about like that backup to our buildings and where they're situated. These heights on, on the sides of our community and, and including the one across the parking lot from us, which would be five stories. It, it just, it dwarfs our community and it gives it like a sense of living in a fishbowl. I mean, we would have, we would have absolutely no privacy. And amplifying this feeling is the lack of the transitions and buffers between the properties. There's no easement planned between the development property line and these proposed buildings. We are going to be surrounded so tightly that it, it makes our property feel completely out of place. So it almost looks like we are the ones who came and developed something different in the middle of somebody else's property when this is all finished. And it's just, it's, it's, it lacks privacy and it, and it feels constrictive. The other problem I have with the plan is that they have called for a half of a car per dwelling unit allotment. And that is a, a serious concern for us. The city standard, which evidently it depends on the bedroom size. For example, a two-bedroom would require 1.5 spaces. So we're, they're going to pack like hundreds of people into this 11-acre chunk of land and only give a half of a car allotment for, for that space. That's just going to create parking difficulties that we're going to end up bearing the brunt of. They're also requesting zoning to accommodate restaurants in four out of five of their buildings, but they're not including parking in their plan for either restaurant or retail spaces that accommodates the, the volume of customers that they're going to be having. So the inadequacy of their parking plan means that we're going to have to endure an endless string of cars that are intruding onto our property in an attempt to access this plan development. People making wrong turns into our property and having to turn around. We already deal with this problem. This would be times how, you know, all of the additional development at the corner of, of Whittaker Mill and, and Wake Forest Road. We then would also be forced to become parking lot Nazis because we're going to have to go to the expense and inconvenience of putting up signs and having people towed when they choose to park in our parking lot as opposed to, to leaving and going and finding an appropriate place to park. And it seems very likely that we're going to have to install a gate to deal with this traffic. So in addition to all of those concerns, I'm also bothered about the driveway spacing that they are suggesting for the, how people are going to access the roads from their property and how close that driveway spacing is to the intersection. The situation of the proposed driveways combined with the increased volume of the traffic that's going to be coming and going is going, going to make it a lot more dangerous to, to enter and exit our property. And particularly, if you notice on the renderings that they provided, they, they don't even, the picture at least doesn't include a space for us to, you know, enter and exit Wake Forest Road. But I think that could actually be something we could mitigate if we could provide a, like a cross-access point that would allow our community to, you know, access the adjacent community and that could maybe reduce the number of road access points by removing our need to access Wake Forest Road. I think that's obviously something that we can have a conversation with the developer on. And I think that we should consider having some kind of a, a walking path added that would help to provide a better sense of connectedness between our townhouses and this new community. But I do think that there needs to be compromise in place for, you know, considering the amount of how these, this new infrastructure will be integrated into the community. It, it needs to be a, the word community needs to be front and center of this. We welcome this development. We all knew it was coming, but it needs to be done right. And that is the concern that we have when, when, when the people that I've spoken to saw these plans, I mean, our mouths dropped open. It was, it was just, it's a shock. I mean, and, and just look at any of the pictures that have been provided and imagine that you're living in the middle of all of that.
Thank you very much for your comments.
The next speaker.
Oh, sorry. And I would ask just additional speakers if, if you could focus on new information or concerns and to try not to be duplicative. That would be great. Thank you.
May I add one thing? And use culturally charged language.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next speaker is Andrew Chung.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak on this new development. I'll limit my concerns to items that I haven't heard yet, but I echo the concerns of Beth Carmichael. I live in the Old Town Village Town Home Community, and we will be blanketed on three sides of this development. Quality of life is impacted significantly. Our safety and privacy are of paramount concern. The significant amount of car and foot traffic from a multi-story residential, commercial, industrial use in such a small area of 11 acres will cause significant strain to both neighborhoods on Mill Street and our townhouse community. Seven to 15-story buildings in this neighborhood just don't fit this neighborhood profile. Although traffic impact studies show that the overall traffic will not be adversely affected, except at certain times, the lack of parking will require drivers to find parking spaces off-site. That will impact traffic and neighborhood safety due to cars searching for street parking. Noise pollution from restaurants, bars, how will that be handled? Traffic noise is a major concern for us. Future land use being allowed for 15-story buildings on tract C would not be beneficial to our neighborhood, not without a more comprehensive study of traffic and future growth. I believe the developer will need to make significant considerations and modifications to their plans to make the development more thoughtful and more of a transition to this community. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments.
The next and final speaker is Amelia Surat.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
We can hear you. Good evening.
Great. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. And so my husband and I own and live in a home on East Whittaker Mill, just a couple houses down from the proposed development. And so I would certainly like to echo the concerns of Ms. Carmichael and Mr. Chung. And, you know, we are excited to see some development come to this side of the neighborhood. You know, we're, you know, we think it's an underutilized area. And so, you know, we're excited for something to come. But, you know, again, we have serious concerns over the proposed scope and the rezoning that's been requested. The proposed development clearly puts profit and interest of the developer above the neighborhood and the folks who live here. And so I, you know, just to give an idea of what the site currently looks like, you know, the developer is proposing to tear down one- and two-story single-family homes and commercial buildings, and again, replace them with five, seven, and 15-story buildings. When, you know, under the comprehensive plan, it really calls for four to five stories with three or four stories on the edge areas. I'd like to address two things that the developer's attorney brought up. And so first is, you know, the Raleigh Iron Works development nearby. So the land, the proposed site, you know, at best is intended to serve as a transitional area between the residential neighborhoods and the larger buildings that are permitted along Atlantic Avenue to the east. But the tallest building that's permitted at Raleigh Iron Works is seven stories. And there are no single-family homes in that area. The zoning permitted for Raleigh Iron Works, you know, really supports that the maximum height of the buildings in the east-end development should be consistent with a comprehensive plan and be limited to three to five stories as this development, you know, really transitions to the homes to the north and west. The developer has also pointed out, or the developer's attorney rather, has pointed out that the location is a city growth center because it's along Wake Forest Road. But the comprehensive plan really makes clear that the City Growth Center designation does not carry with it any recommendations for specific uses and building heights or densities for certain sites and should not be used by the city as part of the review of zoning map amendments and development plans. You know, rather, the future land use map is the primary means to shape Raleigh's future growth and, you know, sets the planned development pattern of the city for the next 10 years. And that map calls for three to five stories. You know, the comprehensive plan, you know, it planned for the future of the city, what the city and its residents really wanted it to look like. So, you know, I'd really urge the Planning Commission to stay true to Raleigh's thoughtful plan for the future of the neighborhood. Again, you know, I would echo Ms. Carmichael's and Mr. Chung's concerns about parking and traffic. I think it will be a huge issue for the neighborhood and cause a lot of congestion on residential streets. And some things that folks haven't brought up that are a bit concerning is the environmental impact of the development. And so the height of the buildings will cause, you know, significant light pollution and glare. And quite frankly, you know, a 15-story glass building will be a blight on the neighborhood. You know, the current proposal meets the bare minimum of 10% open space, but it doesn't look like there are any, you know, real green spaces. You know, there are city parks throughout Five Points and Highmount. You know, there's the Greenway right nearby that serve as, you know, gathering spaces for the residents. And so, you know, I hope that the commission encourages the developer to include more open and green spaces to keep it consistent with the neighborhood. I'd also like to, just to note that the city has signed on to the mayor's climate protection agreement. And the comprehensive plan provides that, you know, the agreement should really shape the use, the land use of new developments, you know, which includes sustainable building practices, participation in the LEED program. You know, so the adaptive reuse of the warehouse buildings is great, you know, but I would really encourage the commission to consider what other sustainable building practices should be required of the developer. And then just lastly, the city has expressed a commitment to affordable housing. And yet, there is currently no mention in the developer's proposal regarding the incorporation of affordable housing. You know, historically, Five Points and Highmount were affordable, you know, middle-class neighborhoods, but they're becoming more and more expensive to live in. And, you know, and among many things that the developer is proposing is to tear down a set of modest, single-family homes to be replaced by upscale, multifamily residential units. So I just think particularly in light of the city's commitment to affordable housing and the housing crisis that we're seeing due to COVID-19, you know, the need for affordable housing has never been greater. And so I'd really encourage the city to require that a portion of the proposed residential units be set aside for the use of young, low-income persons. So thank you again.
Thank you for your comments. I'd now like to allow for questions and comments from commissioners. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Winters.
Thank you. With the last caller, please forgive me. I failed to write down your name, so I did want to echo the point about affordable housing to Mr., I'm sorry, I forgot the presenter.
Birch.
Mr. Birch, thank you. I'm sorry. That was a question I also had about affordable housing. Is that something, I didn't see it in the plan, is that something that you're planning on doing? You're open to?
So at this point, you're right, the plan does not include any affordable housing in the development. That is something that the developer continues to look at, has tried to be a part of the affordable housing solution in a broader sense from being involved in the bond, et cetera. But as of right now, there's not any, you know, specific allocation of units within this development.
Thank you. And I want to just circle back around for a moment. I think Mr. Birch had asked if he could have a few minutes after the public spoke to address some of the comments. If it's okay with the rest of the commissioners, I'd like to give him a chance to do that. Mr. Birch?
Thank you. I appreciate it. And we'll just touch on kind of two items. One is the transitions raised by Ms. Carmichael and Mr. Chung. And again, just note, as we did in our presentation with the update, that we are trying to detail and make commitments around transitions, both to Cotton Exchange as well as Mill Street to the north. The other item I wanted to address was a concern around parking. Yes, our master plan does provide for reduced parking ratios, very similar to the DX district or what is allowed in urban, when you have an urban frontage. We think this site is very similar to those. And though you've reviewed the text change, that really now there is no parking minimums in the downtown area. And so what is in the master plan is only a minimum and is not necessarily representative of what will actually be built, which will be dependent on the mix of uses and the types of tenants in the office, et cetera. But we do think that this is a location and type of development that can take advantage of shared parking, walkability to where we don't need to fully comply with the regular code standards. And then just one item on connectivity, that is another item, particularly with cotton exchange, whether it's vehicular, pedestrian, otherwise, that we are looking at and considering how to address. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back to the table. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Bennett.
Thank you. So Wake Forest Road is a transit emphasis corridor, I believe I read. Is there, I guess at the site planning stage, is there some type of parking study or something that would be done to try to determine the parking impacts? Or, you know, if what they have proposed will be sufficient, given whatever transit plans are made for that corridor?
This is Ira. I'll give it a shot while I think maybe Sarah unmutes Jason Myers. But no, I think that, oh, all right.
I'm used to having to unmute myself after I'm allowed to. I did what Sarah did for me. This is Jason Myers in the Department of Transportation. There are only two kinds of parking studies that the city reviews, and both of them are for cases where a developer or property owner wants to reduce a requirement or provide an alternative requirement for parking standards. One of them is for shared parking in a situation like this, but without a PD already regulating what those parking ratios would be. And the other would be is just a general administrative alternate to our parking regulations. Neither of those would apply. And so if this PD is adopted, their standards will be what's in the PD, and there wouldn't be a review of that, except at a site plan stage to make sure that they met the requirements in the PD document. And the amount of transit available there or maybe available in the future is not something that would be considered in terms of counting parking spaces at a site plan review. That's something that the commission and city council can consider now as they evaluate the planned development.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bennett.
Just to follow up, so I guess I'm looking for some direction, maybe from Jason, your staff or planning staff. Are you, do you have a concern about parking with what is proposed for this rezoning? And it's spilling over into the townhouse development and other developments in the area?
That's not something that I've really looked at in this case. In my role, I'm not usually looking at parking ratios. And especially in a case where there's not a lot of surrounding places where that parking is obviously going to go, though Cotton Exchange Place has its private parking. And I can see how theoretically there may be an issue there. I guess that from the standpoint of public use of public streets, somebody parking on a neighborhood street a quarter mile away and then walking rather than parking in the development is not something that we're usually highly focused on. And that there are tools to address that when and if it becomes an issue, like a residential parking program that exists around many of the schools, the universities and some of the high schools in parts of the city. But that's not something we review in zoning cases usually.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lampman, did you have your hand up earlier?
I did. Couple things. Can city staff remind me which rail line will be converted to mass transit that we think? Is it the CSX?
The railroad that is right along the edge of this planned development district is the S-line. It was CSX, and the North Carolina Department of Transportation is either in the process of or has purchased it from the private railroad. That railroad is in the comprehensive, I'm sorry, in the region's Metropolitan Transportation Plan to include commuter rail service and is also slated for passengers, so the restoration of passenger service between Richmond and Raleigh and of course, beyond in both directions. There isn't any transit service that would serve this development in a plan or in this area. There may be commuter trains that pass by between North Raleigh and downtown and on their way to Wake Forest. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Lampman?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. But that's still, all of that is still like theoretical and a possibility in the future. None of it's necessarily set in stone. I have another really random question, so if anybody else has any regarding transportation or parking.
Commissioner Hacks, I believe you're muted.
Sorry, sorry. I also, I have a comment related to parking. I imagine it'll come up, you know, several times during our discussion. Since the applicant is adjusting what the parking requirements are from what the city standard is, perhaps they could provide us with some information in how they envision the impact of that playing out through the development. You know, typically, the parking requirements may limit how big a building can be. And so there's a little bit of checks and balances there. And since we don't have that, it would be useful if maybe the applicant could provide us some sort of information or vision or something for how they anticipate that working successfully. Commissioner McIntosh, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I guess I'll say first, I love Gensler's work and the renderings. You know, it looks like a really beautiful design. But I'm really bothered by the site layout. And I'm not understanding it, building this development. It feels very aggressive, building all around this existing townhome community. It feels like these huge buildings going up, turning their backs to this community, this townhome development and, you know, and not even bothering to connect to the neighborhood. I don't, I mean, it's reminding me of that picture a lot of us have seen of the two-story house in the middle of downtown Manhattan with the skyscrapers all around it. And, you know, the illustration for air rights where they're building, they're building a skyscraper and then it's going up over the two-story house. It just, I just, I don't understand. You know, it's a planned development, but it just feels like there's this piece that wasn't, that's existing, that wasn't planned for the townhomes. And then also the corner, the existing guest, I forgot if it's a garage or a gas station, but it, you know, it's this beautiful buildings they're planning, but then there's these little chunks that don't fit. And it feels like they're just being ignored, but there are people who've been there for a long time. So I just, I'm not, I guess this speaks to why it's not, why it's not meeting the requirements of the comprehensive plan. I'm just, it's really bothering me.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Fox.
I'd be interested in holding this until our next meeting to allow the applicant to have additional meetings that they mentioned earlier. I'm also concerned about some of the transitions to the townhouse community and then cross-access and then the outstanding issues that are identified on page 11 in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Fox. Okay, so. So I think that's a good recommendation. I don't, is there any need to summarize kind of what the concerns were? I felt like they they were covered pretty well. So I'm not going to go through and list them all individually. But I look forward to getting feedback and more conditions, more information on these topics that were discussed, both brought up both by the public and here at the table. Commissioner Lampman.
This was kind of along the lines of my my random question. I'm looking at one of those slides, slide or 24 out of 24. It's the one where you have like the the shade, the shade renderings and I think some of the things that I've kind of lost in the, in is this, the to know if the if the transitions are to scale. And so one of the thoughts that I had, and this goes back to some of the other comments about dwarfing those townhomes is, you know, if the way the sun will go, those those townhomes will probably be in the dark most of the day. So I think that that's something that we might want to be thinking about, especially as everybody else is bringing up the the conversation about transitions. I didn't realize how how intensive that might be for the for the townhomes and the square that is, there's three down, one and then three and one in the middle on the right, perspective view, three, Wake Forest Road and Cotton Exchange. I don't know if that's to scale, but anyway, I think that Commissioner Fox brought up the best points of working with the community and seeing what we could do there. And then also I do think parking, North Hills has a relatively good way of parking and, you know, where the cowfish area is, there's a lot of parking in there. And it seems to be able to absorb a lot of the nightlife, which I think this will be bringing. So those were some thoughts as well.
Thank you very much. And I would, I guess, you know, if you have additional comments or concerns to reach out to the applicant and and let them know what those are so they can take those into consideration in advance of our our next meeting. And with that, without further, without any objection, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.